All right, good morning, everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. Chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Shane Ellison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we're thankful for this day of sunshine that you've given us. We're thankful again for the opportunity to serve you, to serve our state, county, and city, and for the job fair that's in our community today. Pray that some of our citizens are blessed through those efforts. And just give thanks for all those in attendance today and for their willingness to serve. Pray that you always be with them and help them to make wise decisions for our community. Pray for the council and the mayor as we go throughout the meeting and the week and just give thanks for all that you've blessed our city with. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on June 20th.
Still move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of June 16th through the 22nd.
Still move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mr. Mayor.
Is anybody here with that group? Come up, please. We're as Gadsens elderly and senior adults are valued members of society. The number of aged citizens is growing and the instance of abuse, neglect, and exploitation of those adults is outpacing the growth of the population. Such elder abuse is a significant and complex social and health problem that impacts all cultural, social, economic, and demographic groups. Combating the mistreatment of elderly and senior adults will help improve their quality of life and will allow them to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of Gadsden. Gadsden's elderly and senior adults have a right to live free of abuse, neglect, exploitation, and to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to be valued members of this community. The City of Gadsden, the Council on Aging of Etowah County, the Adult Service Program, Etowah County Department of Human Resources, and many other social service agencies are committed to working closely with community partners to protect and provide the needs for our aged citizens. The City of Gadsden and the Council on Aging of Etowah County are committed to serving the aged population by supporting programs and services the community needs, including public education. The protection of our elderly and senior adults is in the interest of all and further adds to the well-being of our city. Therefore, I, Stormont Gotten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim Elder Abuse Awareness Day and encourage all citizens to raise awareness of elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation.
Good morning. I should say, good afternoon. This is, I'm Jennifer Grace from the Council on Aging, and we are having our Elder Abuse Summit tomorrow. We've been doing it for 12 years to educate our community on elder abuse. Unfortunately, it's growing. I don't know if it's the abuse that's growing or just that they're more aware and they feel more comfortable about reporting, and that's really what we want to do is educate them so that they feel comfortable to report so that they don't have to go through such a tragic thing. I had asked DHR the other day for some numbers, which they're going to report, so I could maybe do a candlelight vigil. But then when I found out how many actually in our county, I wasn't sure if I could afford it. But what I'm trying to say is there's that many people in our community. The senior citizens, baby boomers are growing every day. One out of 10 seniors report abuse, and unfortunately, one out of 24, or I mean, there's 24 that don't report. So, we're hoping the numbers are only growing because they're more educated and feel more comfortable about coming forward, not that the abuse is actually increasing. But I thank you for having us here today, and I'm honored to be here. And we invite you to come join us to fight this battle in our community. So tomorrow at the Senior Activity Center from 10 to 1, we will have wonderful speakers and free lunch. Can't pass up a free lunch. And we'll have snacks also, and we'll continue to fight this battle with our community. The number she gave me for the fiscal year, which is not over, is 273. She said if it continues to be as busy as it has been, they'll exceed the numbers in previous years.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Williams has asked me to be brief, so I've had to jot a few notes down. We want to talk a little bit about economic, I'm Frankie Davis, Economic Development for the City of Gadsden. We want to talk a little bit about economic development, workforce development. If time allows it, I'd like for the members of our Industrial Development Authority to introduce themselves later, but for now, if they would, just stand up, please. As you can tell, we've got a lot of generals, I think, in the crowd, but anyway, it's a great thing for them to come together and work as a group for economic development. And the council, the reason we ask you today is a couple, to be here, there's a couple of things going on. And one, you got the job fair today, and we thought it would be appropriate to discuss what the IDA is doing at this point in time. And they have done some restructuring over the last few months in additions to the board that we think better reflects the needs of today. And I want to give a special thanks to Greg Gregerson, who's been president during this time of transition. A lot of these members have been with IDA for years, some are new. And the mayor, you may have to use the gavel on him. He'll be longer. But the mayor will explain some of the reorganization, and I'll just read a few brief comments that we had and hope that it explains a little bit of what we're trying to do. A recent letter to the editor in the Gadsden Times has questioned the value of economic development as it relates to this community's sustainability and growth. Maybe we have not explained enough the value of business, government, and education working together for continued economic development for Gadsden and Etowah County. I think that this is a good time to update the Gadsden City Council and community on investment in the Industrial Development Authority and their additions and restructuring of the IDA to better reflect Gadsden and Etowah County areas' current needs that will give the greatest potential for growth in a competitive, ever-changing business climate. You know, there's a lot of good things going on in Gadsden. Sunday, my wife and I, and she happens to be here today, so if I say anything wrong, I'll know about that one. We walked the trail at the falls, and it was crowded with people on the trail, at the falls, as we came back by Couso Landing, it was covered up with people. Restaurants were busy. There was a lot going on in Gadsden, and it's not like that every day, but most of the time there is. You, and I need to recognize Heather for the works that she's done with Councilman Worthy on the job fair. They've put a lot of effort into that. There's an old saying that business goes where it is wanted and stays where treated well. As you know, business must make a profit. By government investing in quality of life issues, infrastructure, site location, site prep, and a trained workforce while working with educators and business community, this gives us the best chance to create better-paying jobs. With increased pay, more commerce is created. It takes a better-trained workforce to compete in today's economy, and as we invest in traditional education as well as career tech, we will deliver a better and higher-educated workforce that will strengthen the area's economy. As you can see by the membership of the IDA Board that includes local government, education, and the business community, we are committed to working together by using all of our financial as well as our human assets to create growth and economic development for this community. In closing, I want to leave you with one other statement. A rising tide lifts all boats, and really, we are all in the same boat of life and community together. Now, I wasn't talking about the tide in Tuscaloosa for Mr. McCarthy's sake. You know, we might get a couple of these mayors and Councilman Eccles going, but we've got to have respect for our Auburn folks in the crowd today. But again, I want to thank all the past and current members of the IDA for their selfless work to make this area a better place in which to live, and especially Mayor Gotten and the City of Council for their continued support of economic development for Gadsden and Etowah County. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board of the IDA, I'd just like to thank the council very much for your help in our reorganization, the mayor's office, Frankie for all he's done to help us through our transition and make it a better organization, and we are going to get some great things done in this community. Thank you.
Excluding the ladies, when I first looked out, I thought the local pool hall had burned. We appreciate everybody being here today, and I want to talk a little bit more about the Workforce Development and Economic Development IDA, and I want to thank Frankie for all the work he does on that. When he helped talk me into running for mayor, I helped talk him into coming with me. But he had a lot of experience in Tuscaloosa when Folklund was governor, and he's proven a great asset to everything that we do up here. Since 2006, the City of Gadsden has been working for ways to improve Gadsden, Etowah County's economy. During this process, leaders have found a great body of research and strong recommendations from the University of Alabama's Center for Business and Economic Research at the Coverhouse College of Commerce. In taking some of the recommendations from Workforce Report 10, I have asked the Industrial Development Authority to restructure to better reflect the growing needs of the community, employers, and our stakeholders. With businesses, education, and government working together, we can create a successful empowerment for a thriving city of Gadsden, Etowah County, and the state of Alabama. The IDA is here to promote industry and trade by helping to facilitate manufacturing, industrial, and commercial enterprises in our community. I want to thank the IDA for making changes to its bylaws to create new standing committees, especially relating to workforce development and retention. The reorganization of the IDA provides for six permanent positions based on the person's job that will make sure the IDA has education and government represented in the area of continuing workforce development and areas of site development and project completion. These six positions are the President of Gadsden State Community College, the Director of Alabama Technology Network, Director of the Gadsden Waterworks, Director of the Gadsden Airport Authority, the Superintendent of Gadsden City Schools, and the Superintendent of Etowah County Schools. The City of Gadsden continues to invest substantial financial and human resources in this board, and I encourage our educators to work together to create the best career technical programs in the state. Through cooperation and coordination of businesses, education and government can be a model for the stadium workforce and economic development. Thanks again for the much-needed restructuring to the IDA, and I am sure by working together we can all do great things for career tech education, which can recreate great-paying jobs for our students and adults in Etowah County. I do have one other thing I want to read. My Army Drill Sergeant said he had an hour's speech, he was going to give it to us in 30 minutes if we got it good. If we didn't, that was tough. I don't usually pay much attention to things, you know, I don't look at Facebook, I don't really know how to get on it. People tell me some of them in my office look at it sometime, or articles and editors in the paper. But, you know, we've been working really hard for about 11 years, and sometimes it just hits a nerve. So I'm going to have a few things to say. There was a letter to the editor a couple weeks ago which insinuated that riverfront development and other projects that had to do with economic development were important, but the school was more important. Sort of insinuated the city was spending and working on those projects and neglecting the school system. And I have said many times, so goes our school, so goes our city. So let me give you a few facts about Gadsden City Schools and the support we do. The city paid for, built, and equipped the career tech building, the football stadium, the bond issued for the school, we pay half and they pay half. Lots of money for outside agency funding went to the school. The mayor and the council discretionary funds bought supplies, equipments, trips, contests for students, band instruments, the SROs for schools and crosswalks, soccer fields and track, two-ball fields, one in each Gadsden, one for girls softball. Funded career tech coaches to recruit for career tech, also concrete work, repairs, and anything they pretty much ask us to do, we've always tried to help. For instance, we have invested in the school board approximately $36 million in capital improvements. When I came into office, we owed $80 million, had a million and a half in the bank in payments of seven and a half million a year. And so, in putting that much money in the schools, I'm glad we've been able to work it out and been able to do it. But the council and I have worked with, all the councils I've worked with since I've been in office have been the biggest supporters of the schools. If you ever want to know the real facts, come to my office, give me a call, I'll meet you anytime. So if you're on Facebook or writing editorial, get the true facts about at City Hall so you'll know what you're talking about. So with the screw and riverfront development, there are approximately 400 to 600 jobs available in Etowah County, and there's a big job fair today that Frankie already mentioned. If you are 18 and over and you're not working, it's your fault, or the parents' fault. So get a job, and let's get a lot of good things going, and quit all the rhetoric that's going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Greg has been with the IDA since inception, and he'll give you a little background and his thoughts on what that's been. He's the Director of Alabama Technology Network, and thank you.
I think there's no need. For 30 years now, 30 years, we have had a partnership at ATN with the City of Gadsden. Some of you have been around here most of those years. It has been a superb partnership, I think. I've tried to be respectful of your contribution to that. We've served about 100 to 200 companies a year and something like 2,000 employees involved in some kind of training. So I want to thank this council, and the previous councils, and the mayor for that partnership. It's been all good. I don't remember one time we had any problems. Frankie, the mayor, asked me to come up here today because I was on the original study team at the University of Alabama that, as this city was transitioning from a commission form of government to a mayor council, it was a good time to take stock, do an assessment, and try to figure out what was the best strategy for the future. Out of that study came the creation of the Technology Center that I'm still at, and the IDA. Many other things came out of it, but I remember when Dr. Patera and some of the others in our group talked to the city leadership, there were lots of issues, obviously. This was the mid-'80s, late-'80s. But we thought there were two that were most critical, and they were critical. And the first was that we establish a modern economic development effort in this city, and that meant revitalizing the chamber a little bit and changing some things at the schools, developing the IDA. So that was one of them. The other issue that was equal was that this community come together. Now, it was critical at that point in time, and the IDA did that, I think, and a lot of you would agree, maybe some don't, but it was a place we could all come and agree to disagree sometimes, but go forward for the betterment of this community. And Frankie said all boats rise in a high tide, and certainly that is still true today. I can't, I think we did a wonderful job in those early days, Bill, at the IDA in bringing this city back. In my opinion, we're at that same situation right now. We have two critical needs, in my judgment, and one of them is that we revitalize and modernize our economic development effort. Heather's doing a lot of things at the chamber, and it's time we revitalize the IDA and got going. We need to be on par with the other cities that we compete against, not only in Alabama, but in Georgia, and Mississippi, and Tennessee, and all around the country, really, because that's who we're competing with today for industry. So we have got to do that. And I'm very grateful to Bill Green and Greg Gregerson and others that have kept the doors open at the IDA and kept us going forward, but now it's time to really put an effort behind that. Are we going to get left behind? We've got to get on par with the other communities. The second thing, just like it was in the mid-'80s, we've got to come together as a community. I think the IDA may be a place we can do that. We need the county council, the county commission, I saw Carolyn this morning, involved. We need all three of the school systems very involved, and we have a wonderful new president at Gadsden State. We need the college involved. We need all the municipalities, Wiley, involved. We need every citizen of Etowah County, and especially the business community, to say we are going to make our own personal agendas second to that of the good of this community. And we're going to come together and agree to disagree sometime and still be friends. So mayor and council, thank you for your leadership on redoing the IDA. I think it is a place that we can get excited about, we can come together, and we can move this community forward. It's high time. If we don't, we're going to get left behind. But I think we are. I think we're going forward. So thank you very much for your leadership, and all of y'all, let's come together and do this thing. We can do it.
Do you have time for each one of these members to just stand up and give their names?
Sure. As you can tell, there's a lot of elected officials here and a lot of business people, and they're from the county. There's two county commissioners here, three mayors that I can tell of, and who knows what else. And I failed to mention Bill Green, who has been keeping the ship afloat for us and is acting executive director. But would y'all mind, this is an area-wide effort that it takes to create good jobs, and if they're created in Southside or Atala, Gadsden Benefits, and vice versa, in the county, and this is the effort that all these people have committed to, and especially the superintendents. And Dr. Lavender's out of town, or she would be here today. She's chairman of the Workforce Committee. So if you have a moment, I wish all of you to stand up and just give your name, and want you to, you don't have to tell your whole resume.
.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. ...[1758.13] You know, when you start looking at all demographics, age, race, color, this is a very diverse group. I think every demographic area within the city is represented within this group. And I do appreciate those of you who stepped up. Thanks to the mayor's office. And Frankie, we we let you come out today, and we appreciate, we appreciate what you've done in terms of your hard work and efforts. I think a lot of times he gets overlooked in terms of a lot of the work that he does to to support this city, but he's very passionate, as you can tell, very passionate about the city and where we need to move forward. So so again, we do appreciate that. Okay. All right, we we don't have any unfinished business today. So this is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance regarding first-floor residential access. This would require multifamily residential units in commercial districts to have a common foyer. This would relieve privacy and safety concerns by avoiding access directly onto a sidewalk or public right-of-way. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance is presented today for a first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 902 Roger Street in District Three, Zellamina O. Johnson being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Good morning. I'm Zellamina. They tell me it's a nuisance, and I've talked to Mr. Harbison, I believe it was, several weeks ago, and he told me if I keep the grass cut and put curtains up or window treatments up, that that's all he was interested in, and that's what I've done.
Okay. Okay.
So is there anything else I need to do?
Ma'am, are you needing some additional time or?
Other than the grass being cut, I don't know what the nuisance is.
Okay. Okay. So so I do want to encourage you after this meeting to speak with Mr. Harbison or someone from the building department, and they can help you get a better understanding of that.
Okay, well, yes, I do need additional time.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Is that it? All right.
Is there anyone else who wish wishes to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I am Brian Harbison with the building department. We started this case in December of two thousand sixteen. There've been some improvements to the exterior of the property. I'll be glad to talk with the owner after the meeting, but if you can see in the pictures, there's still multiple issues on the exterior of the house that need to be addressed. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to ask that we table it for thirty days.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for thirty days, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to table for thirty days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 607 South Sixth Street in District Five, Paula Aguirre being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves some commercial property. It's been vacant for a couple of years now, located on Sixth Street. We started the process in November of two thousand sixteen. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the building department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 621 South Sixth Street in District Five, Paula Aguirre being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case is also involving commercial properties immediately adjacent to the previous case by the same owner. It is on a separate parcel. We started the process in November. Been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the building department, I recommend that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 921 Holly Street in District Five, R.R. Simmons and the state of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of this year. There've been no improvements. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the building department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering assessing nuisance abatement liens on property at 833 Country Club Drive in District Four, estate of Irvin L. and Mary W. Neff being the last known owners. This is for removal. So the bill, the bill for the pending nuisance abatement lien on property at 833 Country Club Drive has been paid. Therefore, no action by the council is needed. Item number fifteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with ETS. This is for the credit card processing services at Twin Bridges Golf Course. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Is there any new business? Department reports, committees, boards?
Good day, everyone. I am Gian Weddington. I'm with the Parks and Recreation Department, and I want to invite everybody out, everybody to come out and play with us in the month of July. Month of July is Parks and Recreation Month, and we're asking you to get your play on in all of our parks. We'll be doing a, on weekends, we'll be coming out to parks, having games for kids and adults to play, and also the playgrounds will be open and other facilities. We're starting out in, on July first at Hastings Park. July second will be at Adams Park. July eighth, Carver Community Park. July ninth, Cherry Street Park. July fifteenth, Dwight Park. July sixteenth, the Wildlife, James C. Wildlife Park. July twenty-second, Lewis Street. July twenty-third, North Gadsden Park. July twenty-ninth, Banks Park. And July thirtieth, Couso Landing. We'll be at each park from two to six p.m., having fun, so we do invite everybody to come out and play. We'll have cornhole, giant jenga, some bubbles for the kids to play with, and jump ropes. So we hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Remarks by the mayor and council? Councilman Matoz?
No remarks.
Okay. Councilman Evans?
I'm not going to make many remarks, but what we have here today, I can't keep from it. The, I was elected when this form of government was changed from a three-man to the council four. That was thirty years ago. So I'm here the same as a, it's my eighth term. I never say I'm not going to run again, but if I did, I'd be ninety years old. I doubt that that'll happen, but it, you can't ever tell I might. But to see all these people here, which is the first time in that thirty years that I've seen this many people for the last, so I'd say, four or five meetings, come and be involved, it's got to help. And I'm sure that we're going to get together and with all the ten little cities that are around and make Etowah County the best, if it's not already the best county, the best county in Alabama. Please keep coming. Keep very interested. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eccles. Councilman Wood?
I'm going to talk about the job fair. When I left from over there about ten minutes to eleven, we had over six hundred prospective job seekers that entered through the doors. We have one hundred employers, and every one of them with jobs available. We have over three thousand jobs available between the one hundred employers. So I just want to thank Katrina Herring. She is the assistant manager at the Career Center, and she will be taking over as manager on July the first. Mr. Washington, even thank the governor for coming this morning. And I just want to thank everyone from Parks and Rec to Gen. They have done an outstanding job. I like to give credit where credit is due. The mayor's office for helping us. You know, we don't see eye to eye on everything, but on this job, on the different job fairs we've had, he has led me and given me everything I've asked for. So I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the council for supporting the job fair. And we hope people will quit talking about we don't have jobs, we have plenty of jobs. You've just got to get up off your butt and go to work. Say, hate to say it like that, but that's just the truth, you know? We're doing this not for ourselves, but to help the community. And we want to get this information out, and it's all type of training programs that Gadsden State put on, the Career Center. All you got to do is go to the Career Center and find that whatever type of training you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Billet?
Good evening, good morning. It's good to see all of the volunteers. I know these people are not getting paid for these jobs that they're doing, and I've met most of them, and most of them are pretty good business people. And and when we can get all of our business people and our civic leaders from the county and different cities in this Etowah County area to work together, that is a blessing. And I'm just glad to see everybody that's volunteering to do what we have to do to make our county a better place. And that's all.
Councilman Reed?
Sure, in a few words, and I know everybody here individually, and I don't think we could ask for a better leadership group than the city of Gadsden. I really don't. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman Reed. Again, just, I do want to, once again, convey convey that sentiment and and thanks to each and every one of them. They even let Chad show up today, so we appreciate that. The council on aging, I don't want to miss an opportunity to to thank them. And I think I've made that very clear since my very first meeting, that the council on aging is one of my favorite nonprofit groups. Now, I'm I'm going to be like a mother with children. I'll probably say that to most nonprofits. But for sure, the council on aging is a group I was very actively raised by my grandmother and my grandparents. So so there's a special place for the elderly in my heart, and I think they do a wonderful job in supporting the community with all the efforts and the work that they do. So we we don't, you know, the point that you were making was very clear. We don't like to see your numbers go up, but we are definitely glad that you're in place when they do, because we all sleep better knowing that our 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 loved ones are being being looked after. So so we do appreciate, again, all the hard work and all the effort that you give to the community. So thank you so much for that. Just a couple of other announcements before we adjourn. Due to the Independence Day holiday on Tuesday, July fourth, the council will not meet next week. Our regular schedule will resume on Tuesday, July eleventh. So again, we will not be meeting on next week, but we will reconvene on Tuesday, the eleventh. Also, due to the the holiday, Tuesday's garbage route will be collected on Wednesday. Okay? So and please, please make make note of those things. And and of course, those, you know, Dr. Miller and 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 Alex Cosby, who are here representing the school boards, and I hope I haven't missed anybody else, but we we definitely appreciate your level of participation, because as as we as we know, educate, our educational infrastructure is key. When we look at, when we when we look at Auburn, Opalika, the Auburn, Opalika area, when we look at the Huntsville, Madison County area, and some of the other areas that are outpacing us in terms of industrial recruitment, you know, we know that at the centerpiece of their model is education. And so we we know that you guys will will bring quite a bit to the table in terms of us being able to leverage that and 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 direct our model towards helping us with economic development. So we appreciate it. Is there anything else before we adjourn? If not, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.[1768.13]